Welcome. This is the regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, August 16, 2023, at the Town and Clinton Zoning Board Appeals. I'm Lori Jaffe, the Chair. We will first calling the meeting to order. And we will take attendance, I see the members. George Dorr.
Here.
Dennis R. M. Secure, President. Drew Richards. Bertram Schmitz. Lori Jaffe, here. Maureen Noonan. Tom Schultz.
Here.
Dylan Walter. Okay, we have one member's present. We'll need to see them all for that, and that will be Tom Schultz, forward, for. So Drew Richards, Drew Richards. Now, Tom, I'm going to ask you, you will be the Secretary for tonight?
Yeah.
Can I ask you then to read the notices?
Sure.
You have to read them.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
Do you agree to legal notice of public hearing, please? And as folks are speaking, if folks can mention that they're speaking out, recording the microphone for our meeting, reporting is actually in this loud device. So as anybody is coming up to their testimony or speak on the back and forth presenting, that's the voice to aim for.
Legal notice of public hearing, we've got a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Jean Rose Reaven of Williams, Sanders, Andrews Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Coen, Connecticut. To consider the following. One, continuing from July 17, 2023, public hearing. VBA 23-3, 53 Shore Road, Nathaniel Fleming applicant. Rosario Baccarella owner. Application for certificate of variance of section 26. Dot 11 dot 14, maximum ground coverage for detached ride. Associates map 79, block 72, lot 61, zone R dash 15. Number two, continue from the July 17, 2023, public hearing. VBA 23 dash four, and cam. 13, 131B Shore Road, Thomas A. Stevens and Associates Incorporated applicant. James A. and Emily M. Warner, owners. Application for certificate of variance of sections 26 dot eight dot two, A six. Dial wetland buffer. 26 point 11 point eight setback other than a front or rear setback. And 26 dot 11 dot 14, maximum ground coverage for replacement residence. Associates map 86, block 72, lot 101, zone R dash 15. Number three, new. VBA 23 dash eight and ZBA 23 dash nine, cam. 23 Blake Avenue, Joe Redd applicant, Robert Kaufman owner. Application for certificate of variance of sections 26 dot 11 dot six. Front setback and 26 dot 11 dot four, maximum ground coverage for replacement residence and sanitary septic system. Accessories match then 70, block 67, lot 54, zone R dash 10. At said hearing, all persons will have a right to be heard and written communication received. The applications and accompanying maps and correspondence are available for public inspection in the land use office of the town hall. Lori Jaffe, Chair, Town Clinton VBA. Email to the Harder Reeves, prepare to appear two times on Thursday, August 3, 2023, Thursday, August 10, 2023.
Thank you, Tom. On the next item on the agenda is minutes. First is the review and Google of the May 17, 2023 meeting minutes. And consideration of proposed corrections by Jaffe. Everyone has seen a copy? People seen a copy? Okay, everyone should have received a copy of the minutes. Would anyone want to make a motion to approve meeting minutes? Ask, would be asked corrective with proposed corrections?
So, so moved, second.
And who was that? Who moved?
George.
George and Dennis. All those in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Any saying? Okay. Those minutes are approved. There are no meeting minutes for the June 21st, 2023 meeting, since that's canceled. And next we proceed to the minutes of the July 19, 2023 meeting. And I believe there were minutes that were posted, and then there were revised minutes. So is it just a revival? It's sort of been the meeting, excuse me, there's a second revision to them that wasn't. In addition to the one that I sent you. The plan of personal had a change on. Let's. For 131B. For Roger. When he wants to change, there was a discussion about a report from the fire chief. Had not been received. And Tom Planner advised that he, the applicant, would have to submit an report to this electronic application. That was an error and should be the, I believe I said that staff could not upload comments from another different application to this one. And that the fire chief, not the applicant, should provide comments. That's her proposed change. Okay, and then you will. And then you'll just go and report for those provisions with these provisions, yes? Would the revisions, the revised minutes along would be proposed revision that Dennis Hines just read? Can I entertain a motion to improve the revised minutes?
So move, sorry.
There was George, Laura, Dennis.
Can I ask people to speak louder? Stay right in my ear.
Okay. Try to remember to do that. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Any sessions? Motion test. Chair comments? The, those of you who may not be familiar, the order, when we get to the public hearing section, we can roll through a minute, a minute. The order of public hearing will be, will be heard from the applicant. Then the applicant will hear questions from the board members, and if staff have any questions. And then we will be heard from the public. Anyone in favor of the application, anyone opposed to the application, or anyone who wants to speak who doesn't have a position in favor of or opposed to the application. Then, if the board has heard enough to close the public hearing, we will proceed to the deliberation decision. Note that the board has 65 days from the close of the public hearing to reach decision. Received applications, Chair. There is one. Just be that. Yes. Okay, received applications. ZBA 23 dash nine, cam, 23 Blake Avenue, Joe Redd applicant, and Bertica Kaufman owner. He'd motion to receive it. Leave a motion, all right, and I can also make a motion to receive the application.
Oh.
Second, George. Dennis, second. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Any sentence? Okay, the motion passes. That was by Dennis and George seconded. I. It was George made it?
Yeah.
George made the motion, and Dennis seconded. Was her vote unanimous? Unanimous, was it? Uh, yes, yes, no exceptions. Public hearing. First item, public hearing continued from July 17, 2023. ZBA 23 hyphen three, 53 Shore Road, Nathaniel Fleming applicant, Rosario Baccarella owner. Application for certificate of variance of section 26 point 11 point 14. Maximum ground coverage for attached detached throughout. Assessors map 79, block 72, lot 61, zone R 15, record ZBA 23 dash three. Point five, 35, post-public hearing ends on August 23, 2023. Is there a representative here tonight from the?
Good evening, Greg Fass. Is that a thing, an area? Office at 76th Street Mystic, Connecticut. Representing the owner. So we were here last month, I think the only.
Before we get going, after I identify yourself, I just want to make a couple of comments, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I know that this was continued. But do I need to ask the fourth question? Excuse me, I need to ask. Just for your questions that are on the record, they. Okay, I'm sorry. Before we get going, before I get to my short note here. We need to ask on the records that some of us were not here at the last month's meeting. And I was not here, and I just want to know through the record that I did review the recording of the July meeting, and also read the notes and had reviewed all of the documents in prior. Tom, you were not here, did you listen to the recording?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and do you feel comfortable in participating in the public hearing tonight and possibly reaching decision?
Okay.
Okay, and I should add that I do feel comfortable participating in the public hearing tonight. Thank you for reminding me. Before you get started, Mr. Fass, welcome. I know that we, the public hearing was continuing for a couple of specific reasons. And I know that you have, we will make a presentation, but I just want to clarify that we will need clarification of how the work on the seaward side of the property relates to request variance. I know that there was a discussion about some numbers that needed to be supplied. Clarification of the actual area of the property and the area of driveway, and which imperious, impervious area will be removed, and a final calculation. And I know that you started the presentation, and I would just ask that when you do make your presentation, you could address the missing things that I just raised now a third, so that you know what we're working with. And then I just ask that you don't repeat, just stay interested, we'll leave things alone, you already, you know, what we presented last time, you could just, you know, add to that. So thank you very much, please proceed.
Okay, so I think we pretty much presented everything last time, did state that there was a couple of typos in our, in our table that did not affect the percentage changes. It also stated that there was a difference. And I don't know where to, do I put this somewhere?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Oh, okay. So I didn't know it's being videoed or anything.
Yeah. They'll come to you.
Uh, so on the subject parcel information, we had a, we had a number from the property card. But we actually have a survey from our pardon that clarifies the number that we used in our tables. So. The table's correct, the variance requested is correct, we're going from. Just make sure I get it right here, we're going from 42.2% to 32.2%. So a 10% reduction. The. And I'm not gonna, I did talk about all of this before, the septic system that's shown here is just for the 100A purposes, it's not going to be installed. So we're not proposing. To do any septic work down here that potentially could be a cam issue. Uh, we do show the pool being removed and the concrete around it being removed as part of our calculation. However, last time we stated, we would be content with a condition that we see, receive cam approval from planning and zoning as part of this approval. When we first admitted, we did submit a cam application in discussions with Abby. She, I guess, kind of scared me a little bit and said, what if you don't get the variance, then you're, then the cam automatically needs to be denied? So we took the, we're gonna do the cam after, if we get the variance with planning and zoning. So that's, so we didn't want to, we didn't want to affect this approval. Uh, if we didn't get the variance for the, for the garage.
May, I don't want to interrupt, but may I ask you a question about 32.8%?
Yes.
Which I was gonna discuss. Is the 32%? Or 32.2% ground coverage? Is that including or not including the cement and the patio and the materials that are going to be removed? Or is it not? In other words, is it 32% now will be 32% once everything that's wanting to be removed is removed?
It's 42.2% now. When we're, the project is fully completed and fully approved, both here at ZBA, if that's the case. As well as our cam application, which would allow us to remove the concrete down in the cam area. Then it would be 32.2%.
So at the end of the day, it will be 32.2%.
It'll be, yes, it would be a reduction of, from 42.2 to 32.2. Which I feel is a significant reduction of the non-conformity.
And that's the only variance, you know.
Correct. We were able to meet the side yard setbacks, front yard setback, and so forth.
Okay, did you have, did you have any?
I didn't really, I thought the real outstanding issue was the fire chief's comments, which. Came in the Sunday after the meeting, and. I can read it, no, no questions or comments or concerns on this application as presented. Unless there's any questions.
Okay, does any member of the board have any questions? George, you.
No.
Bert?
No. It's refreshing, I remember in the garage, can you show us what that looked like again?
Uh, well, it's located, it's, it kind of mirrors the garage on the other side, but it's located here, kind of a shaded, a little bit darker area.
One story, two story?
Uh. You have a. It's like one and a half stories, so it's this.
And what's the half story?
Half story.
What is that?
Uh, it's just a loft area.
And does the loft area have any utilities?
It does have, yeah, electric and funk.
As for me, for what?
Yeah. Uh, for the office.
So it's gonna be possibly looking for it up there, possible habitat for us?
Uh, I guess it's possible.
Okay.
But our B 100A reflects, that's the correct number of evidence.
Tom, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I, as always, have some questions.
Yeah, yes.
Was, first is a question, is there some question about the size of the garage? If there's some.
Uh, I'd say so.
Maybe I'm missing it out, I'm sorry, I'm in the verification. 590 versus 500 and something, or what is the size of the garage?
Uh, 23 by 23. It's 538 square feet, I think. 23 by 23 is, but there was a little. Little jog here, I think, with the doors. Yeah, it's correct, 538. Yeah, 538, which is 23 by 23, plus this little bump out here.
I don't see the new, you're at the application, so the applicant has proved the hardship, that there's something indeed peculiar to this particular property. And I understand that the basis of your application is a reduction of existing non-conformities. And in a letter that was submitted, apparently, the applicant relies solely on the Enadelson case. But I, reviewing the case, I believe that that case is distinguishable. That case related to non-conforming uses of property rather than non-conforming structures. The applicant enables the more under changing established non-conforming loose boundary to a less conforming use in auto shop. And I think that's very distinguishable in this case, which is a residence, it's not a business, this is not an issue of the use, it's rather a non-conforming structure. However, even if reduction to non-conformities is considered, in my view, a reduction to 32.2%, which frankly is not sufficient enough, it's so much higher than the law of 15%. It's over-doubled the allowed, the allowed percentage, which is 15. So those are my questions or comments. And. I would like to ask if the board. Does any comments, the staff didn't, I'm sorry, the staff does any comments? No, not this time. Then I'd ask how there's any public testimony that anyone would like to submit. I will have to ask three times, is there anyone who would like to testify in support of this application? Is there anyone who would like to submit testimony in support of this application? Sorry, I have to ask third time, is there anyone who wants to submit testimony in support of this application? Is there anyone who wants to submit testimony in opposition to this application? Is there any person who wishes to submit testimony in opposition to the application? For third time, is there anyone who wished to submit any testimony in opposition to this application? Is there any old member of the public who wishes to speak on the record but is not in favor of or opposed to the application? Is there anyone in the audience, anyone of the public who would like to submit any testimony? Who's neither opposed nor in favor of the application? And finally, I will ask again, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak but is not in favor of or opposed to the application? Are there any documents that the applicant wishes to have read into record? We have a listing of all the documents, you know, in the case file. Is there any document that you wish to have read into the record?
I don't think I need them read into the record, but it's great, pettis again. Uh, but your staff, Abby Pierce Sol's memorandum dated July 5th. Second to last paragraph talks about. The Adolphson, as it relates to non-conforming uses and rather than non-conforming structures. She goes on to state, court cases subsequent to Adolphson have been upheld in which CBAs granted variances for structures based on the reduction of existing non-conformities and findings of consistency with the purpose of. And plan for the zoning regulations, the board may grant a variance based on a reduction of a non-conformity, but it's not required to do so. Um. So clearly, I mean.
Well, we're just asking at this point.
Yeah.
But go ahead, and we're asking, this document is or in record, but go ahead.
I'm not, I'm just stating this in response to your, your comments regarding the fact that it doesn't apply.
Go ahead. You should finish your comment.
Yeah, that's, that's. Uh, basically it, and I. Firmly disagree that 42.2% existing down to 32.2 is not significant. It's 10%, it's. 1300s, 2300 square feet, approximately, a reduction of impervious surface. I think that is significant. All other. Regards to our proposal are conforming. And I think. You know, that, that the Adolphson case does apply here, it's applied here before. Before this commission. As well as according to your own staff, that it's been tested in different court cases, so. I respectfully ask for approval of this application that presented. Thank you.
I'll just follow up with a comment to your comment that, that's absolutely true, cases have applied evidence, but what happens in other cases, we referred to other cases before, for the board of applicants. Each applicant we consider, or I consider on a individual basis. And in a board, even though variances can be granted, of course, for reduction of non-conformities. A board certainly has discretion to choose not to do that. So it's a loud board, but it's discretionary. But thank you, so no other, there are no other documents you wish to have read in the record? Okay. Uh, just, I'd like to know at this point, if the board has enough, if the board members have enough information to post the public hearing? George?
Just a little bit.
Bert?
Yes.
Dennis? And I have none. Now, let her page, I would have a panel to pose the public hearing for ZBA 23 hyphen three, 53. George, George, and Dennis, that's why we can probably just speak out so that everybody. Okay, I have one more follow. Or no, and this is, okay. I was thinking of all the things that you posed in public hearing. I am. Any opposed? Yes, yes. Even with the. See, yeah, even though like you're on the agenda, we do the breaks. You would have to reorder the agenda, you would be public carriers, and all right, we'll just, then we'll just. We will continue with the public hearing. Public hearing section B, continue from July 17, 2023, ZBA 23 dash four, cam, 131B Shore Road. We have a representative, the applicant.
Hi, good evening. Ed Casella, representing James and Edward Warner, who are the owners of 131B Shore Road. Uh, James is here this evening, along with Tony Bolduc from Stevens and Associates, and John Parker, who's the project engineer. So we have another continued hearing, so I'm sure you've been along to do your, uh. You want to do the same thing on the record about watching the tape?
I guess, and then I have another thing, thank you, see.
Catch on, Greg.
Okay. I, Jaffe was not present, and I did watch the recording of the, of the July 19, 2023 meeting. I reviewed all of the documents in the record, and I feel comfortable participating in the public hearing and. If we get to the point to deliberate in reach decision on 131B Shore Road. Tom Schultz, I'll ask you the same question, because you were not here at the last meeting, did you listen to your recording?
Excellent.
And do you feel comfortable participating in the hearing tonight, and possible, we get to the point of deliberating and voting on this afterwards?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. What I also would like to say, welcome into the Casella. The, your, the application was continued for a couple of reasons, to get the fire chiefs report and the town engineers reports and from viewing the record, it appears that we have received those. What I'd like to ask you to do at the outset, I don't want to throw off the order of your presentation. But I would ask that you address at the outset, the into reverse rule. Namely, whether the variance is requested in this application. And or the circumstances affecting the property have changed in a manner, who would justify the reversal of the board's previous action? And that action is a motion to approve that unanimously failed as to the associated camp. And I'm asking you to do that, I hope it doesn't throw off the order of the presentation, but the board is going to have to agree to make a finding. Uh, as to whether or not, um. We'd be impotent to reverse rule applies, it often applies to the context of cases of the applications that are recent, or submitted within six months of the previous denial of an action by the board. But our town council, um, has advised us. That the impotent to reverse rule applied, whether or not a new application is filed within six months. So I would appreciate that, uh, you were doing that, and as I mentioned in Mr. Cletus, in the previous application, um, just in the interest of time. If you can, I know you started to present, and we perhaps you probably didn't finish what you wanted to finish. But if you can try not to repeat what was, um, noted last time, so thank you, please proceed.
No problem, uh, we submitted, uh, with respect to the first question, there is a document, uh, in the record, which, um. Shows the differences between the application, which was heard in August of twenty twenty-two. And the current application, which was submitted in twenty twenty-three. Um, so I can just highlight that because there's some significant, uh, differences. In the previous application, uh, the setback on the side requested was two point five feet. And that's been doubled to five, uh, point zero feet on the side setback. The setback to the title wetlands, which is essentially in Long Island Sound. Was forty-four point six feet, and that's been increased to forty, uh, uh, forty-five point two feet. Coverage previous was nineteen hundred square feet, twenty-two point five-six percent, has been reduced to nineteen hundred. Um, square feet, twenty-two point one percent, and perhaps the biggest change is of floor area. Previously, the floor area requested, and, and just a little bit of context, this is a condominium. So there are two houses that are on one lot, so when we talk about these bold numbers, if you have to bear in mind, these are two houses. So previously, the application asked for, uh, one thirty-one B to be remodeled. So that the total floor area of both houses would be forty-two hundred eighty-eight square feet, which was forty-nine percent coverage. Uh, that's been reduced, now the total of both houses is thirty-four hundred thirty-four square feet. And it complies at thirty-nine point eighty percent floor area, so the total of both houses. It's actually a two hundred and fifty square foot addition from the floor area perspective that these applicants are seeking. That's what they're asking for, in addition to FEMA compliance and tearing down a house and reconfiguring it, all those things, which I'm sure you've heard about. Uh, at last meeting, but those are the significant differences between August twenty twenty-two and the, uh, present twenty twenty-three application.
I have some questions about that, but would you prefer to go through your presentation?
No, go ahead.
And then I can come back?
No, that's.
I just, I thought it might make sense.
Yeah, so they asked me some questions.
Are you referring, Mr. Casella, to the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three updated July nineteenth letter?
Yes.
Okay, um. My first question was that, uh, under the, the, the differences that you claim are, uh, what you found are differences? It says that one point eight revised, five point zero revised, um, however.
Well, I might be, I might be referring to the wrong letter, because there wasn't change in the application where we increased the, um. We increased the setback from two point five, uh, or two point oh to, um. Five point oh, the variance that we're asking for is five point oh today.
Well, that's my question, your application says two point zero.
Yes.
The letter of carship in the file says, I'm sorry, says two feet.
Yes.
The letter of carship in the file says two feet, and I believe there was some discussion at the last meeting about an ever-source platform.
Correct.
So, uh. I think it needs to be clarified, in my mind, that's the big difference, your application says, um. Two feet.
Yes.
Is it two feet or is it five feet?
Five feet.
Okay, and what about the ever-source platform?
So the ever-source platform, um, has been relocated, I think we showed it at the last meeting. So previously, the ever-source platform was situated on the eastern side between the house and the property line. And that's been relocated to where the existing stairs are on the western side of the house in a conforming location. So there's existing stairs coming up, there's a door, and then there's a platform. So we were able to incorporate it into design, so that no variance would be needed for the platform. So now the variance that we're requesting for the side yard setback is five point zero.
Okay, uh, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
And one other question, uh, the coverage on the letter. Says that you're seeking now twenty-two point one zero, so twenty-two point one, is that? The applicant says twenty-two point seven three, so which is it?
Twenty-two point one, when, when we remove the, uh, I believe, and. When we remove the platform, that removed structure, and now because the stairs and the platform are incorporated in. Into the existing stairs, we're able to even lower the, the coverage from what was on the application and advertised. So, just to sum up, the coverage we're requesting is twenty-two point one, which is consistent with the updated plan. By FEMA and Associates, which is, uh, revised through seven nineteen twenty-three. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you have any other information?
No, you, I don't.
No, I just, I just, before you moved on, when you were talking about how could we, we were discussing, you were discussing, you're impotent to reverse rule. I didn't answer the question because you were referring to this letter.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that sums it up, again, we, if everybody has any questions, we've doubled the setback. From two and a half feet on the last application to five, and we made. Uh, gross floor area come down from forty-nine percent. To thirty-nine point, um, eight percent, and it's now conforming, it's a two hundred and fifty-eight square foot floor area increase for this redevelopment. So those are the reasons why we think there's significant changes from the August twenty twenty-two application to the current application. I don't know if you want to.
Okay, I, I did know a little bit of interpretation that you, that wanted to present.
Not, not.
Oh, okay, I.
Well, I was going to adjust the fire chief's letter in that.
Sure, okay.
Um, so the fire chief, uh, wrote a letter that we responded to, it's in the record, I did bring copies. Um, uh, to hand out if people want to see them, but, um, the, the. Fire chief, uh, uh, made some comments and requested conditions, um, and our response is as follows, first of all, the house. To a large extent, from a height perspective and from a floor area perspective, they meet zone. Right, so what we're asking for variances for are the setbacks, a little bit of coverage, twenty-two percent or twenty is allowed. And then, um, the distance to, to Long Island Sound, so from a fire, uh, protection standpoint. Um, the houses, that this house in relation to the house on the east side is being moved, um. And will now be, uh, ten point eight feet from the house on the east, where they're currently about seven point eight feet apart. So there's a three-foot increase in separation. Uh, in addition to that, this is going to be brand-new construction, which requires meeting the up-to-date codes, which requires. Substantial fire ratings on all materials, uh, including cheap rock framing. There, there's fire ratings everywhere, what we have there now is a nineteen twenties cottage. That's closer to the other house, so if there was a fire, I think we all know which house is going to burn quicker, faster and stronger. This house is elevated in the air, concrete pilings, meet VE code, and so there are going to be, from our perspective, and only better. Improvements from a fire protection standpoint, there are going to be substantial other public safety protections. The house isn't going to blow away, like the nineteen twenties cottage will become, it will become projectiles everywhere. Uh, and obviously will, um, be much more, uh, better to stand up to hurricane winds. And, and floodwaters, like, could be susceptible in the VE zone, so yes, the applicant is asking to redevelop this house. He's putting it above, um, the FEMA level, building an entirely new co-compliant structure. Using better fire rating materials and pushing it further away from the house next door. So i- in terms of the conditions, the applicant is willing to install a EAS box. And have a, um, a monitored fire alarm system, which will assist the, um, fire department in the event that there's. Uh, something there, but we, we hope that the ZBA understands that there's a benefit to building a new co-compliant structure further away. That will hopefully alleviate the, the fire, uh, department's concerns. And we're, and, and the bottom line is, it needs, it needs owning, right, it's, it needs gross floor and it needs height. So it's not too big on either of those fronts. So that's, that's with respect to the, uh, uh, to the fire chief's letter. We, we, you know, I can, I can just continue on and briefly wrap up and talk about that, why we believe the basis for approval.
Sure.
If you want, um, and we discussed it at length during the, during the last hearing, but the, our. There's, there's two factors here, the first is, this is the condominium development, so that, that does provide unique challenges to this. Property owner, uh, there is on the plan, a limited common area line, which this house cannot go over. Right, so he's sandwiched in between. A property line and its setback in a limited common area line, the resulting house that they're asking for is only seventeen feet wide. That's a very, very narrow house, and they've done that in order to make. The best setback possible, five feet, anymore, and you're just, you're eliminating a reasonable house, right? So, the condo does add a unique element, I know it's not. Completely unique, and there are other condos in the Shore Road area, but what the standard is, is, you know, it's. It's. It doesn't generally, most of the houses in that, in that district are not condominium. Uh, many are, but most aren't, so it, it is, it is a, an unique attribute which does. Affect this property owner's ability to use his property and to have a reasonable sized home on it. Uh, but, but I think most importantly, what we're relying on for the approval are the reductions in non-conformity that we have present in the application. The existing house is one point eight feet at its closest point off the property line, and we're moving it to five feet. Um, the title wetland setback is, uh, forty-three point eight, and we're pushing it back to, uh, forty-five point two. Um, and the coverage is, uh, twenty-six point one eight. That's, um, um. And we're reducing it to twenty-two point one, that's a three hundred and fifty square foot reduction in building structure coverage. And we're really confined by that line, so when, when you think about reductions in non-conformity, I want you to think about the limitations that the condo has on it as well. We really can't push the house any further, uh, to the west away from that setback. Um, the legal reliance that we have, there, you know, the, the, the case that took Adolphson from a use case. To a structure case is called Hescott, are you familiar with Hescott?
Go ahead. What's, you, you don't, go ahead.
I want to make sure, uh, I brought a copy.
Okay.
Um, so.
That's a presentation, I'm not, I'm not being questioned, you go ahead.
No, I don't, that's a good point, um, so Hescott, where zoning board appeals involved a tear down or rebuild in Stonington. Where a property owner sought to make their house, uh, FEMA compliant, and they moved the house three feet. Further away from, uh, Long Island Sound. And in that case, the court took the Adolphson decision, which is an old use case. That said you can go from a boundary to a better use, something like that, and said, yeah, the same applies to structures. When you make structures more conforming with respect to setbacks, coverage and the normal. The, the normal regulatory, uh, restrictions that are on a property. If you reduce or eliminate non-conformities, uh, those are independent standalone grounds for the granting of variances. Um, so there is, there is case law that takes Adolphson and applies it to exactly what we're trying to do here, which is tear down a beach house. Make it FEMA compliant, make it more conforming with the side setback, more conforming with the coverage, it meets GFA. It meets the height. So those are, um, you know, the basis why we believe that you should approve this application.
Just refreshing my memory.
Yes.
With Hescott involved coastal resources consideration?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and we have a similar coastal resource consideration here, because we're pushing it two feet further from the, uh, from Long Island Sound. So yeah, it was coastal resource and FEMA elevation. Uh, we do have letters of support that are in the record, I think we read them last time. I just wanted to refresh the board's memory, uh, that four of the neighbors, um, submitted letters in support. We, uh, received a correspondence from DEP that they felt as though the, um, expansion. When it came down from ten percent to three percent was much more reasonable, so from a camp perspective, we checked a couple of boxes. Uh, obviously, elevating above FEMA is a major, um, policy, and yes, there is a. An increasing floor area, two hundred and fifty-eight square feet, uh, but when you consider what a property owner has to do in order to achieve compliance. And all the benefits, not only from a flood perspective, fire, hurricane, everything, um, adding two hundred and fifty-eight square feet is not a, uh. Is not an egregious amount, and, and they stayed within the gross floor area. They stayed within the allowable, uh, percentage which the town allows, and remember, what we're talking about here is not. A thirty-four hundred square foot house, because of the condominium, we're talking about a fifteen, uh, sixteen hundred square foot house. That's what, that's what they're asking for permission for, because the other house has the other gross floor area. And they're left with what they're left with, they're the second to redevelop, so they're, they're, they're limited, that's, they're asking to go from thirteen thirty to fifteen eighty-eight. So it's not, not a huge, not a huge expansion when you consider all the benefits, hopefully that will be achieved by this application. Um, I don't know if anybody has questions, myself or the, uh, property owner, but.
Are you finished?
We're finished.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, um, go ahead, we have, it's time for questions in the board, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I see your response to the fire chief, but what did, what did the letter say for the fire chief, basically?
Sure.
I didn't see you follow that over, I'm sure it's there, but there are a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot. Um, thank you, I can read, you want me to read it? Yeah, please, sure, uh, I'm reviewing the application of one thirty-one B Shore Road. I have the following comments, I believe I did a review for this location in August twenty twenty-two. Although we can only apply ordinance or code to the requested variance in the application, we buy this need to exercise function. Due to the size of the existing structure on adjacent block and imposed additions to this existing structure, we do not guarantee adequate fire protection in this area. Continuing to allow structures of this size, lots of small, to be constructed so close together, in my opinion, is a recipe for disaster. The combination of limited apparatus access, size type instruction, the weather given is possibly for Long Island Sound. Winds causing erratic fire behavior create the markings for catastrophic fire event. Should this application be approved, we strongly urge that the authority having jurisdiction request that following items be considered or required. Consider fire resistant exterior siding materials, residential sprinkler, monitored fire alarm system, EAS box. If you have any further, uh, or more specific questions, please do not hesitate to contact me directly.
Thank you.
Uh, since you started, do you have any other questions, or?
Just that, I, um. Remind me, you did address all those in the response, that you do all these things?
No, he, what, what they're agreeable to, some of these are very possible prohibitive, and, uh, is the monitored fire alarm system in the E. And uh is the monitored fire alarm system in the E A S box. Uh, based upon the fact that we're pushing the house further away, it's going to be, it's going to have a fire resistant foundation because of the. I'm free, um, the house is going to be here and it's it's, there are fire ratings applicable, but. Fire resistant exterior siding materials is. We're not willing to do, we're not willing to stipulate that, okay? We're, you know, if necessary, thank you.
Hey, um, let's turn to any questions. I have some um questions or comments. Thank you for addressing uh the infinite reverse rule. I, I don't think that. With any conditions or circumstances affecting the property, we change in a manner that just applies to reversal of our previous action. Which was a unanimous no vote on August seventeen twenty twenty two. And it's true, the maximum floor area uh is less than that in the previous application. But I don't necessarily view that as a change in condition. Uh, that materially affects the merits of this application. Three of the four variances that have been requested previously are also being requested. Those same categories are being requested in this application. And I think that even if uh that rule is considered to have been satisfied, in other words. Or we determine that people were determined that there were significant differences. I don't believe that the um that the changes uh for. Uh, this application being granted, uh in a sense. The difference in the in what we requested, if I can pull this back. Well, I repeat, um, it's now five feet on the side setback, the proposal rather than ten. That that is increased, but uh it from one point eight to five, but that's still five feet. Uh, less than what it needs to be under our own regulations. And the twenty two point ten percent um coverage is. Is still above the twenty percent coverage, uh which is required on resolving. And I think that's. What was denied before the ground coverage, I believe it was requested before was. It's twenty two point. Okay, the ground covers that is requested before was twenty two point seven three, is that correct?
Yes.
Now it's twenty two point one.
Correct.
So that's a difference of point six percent, and I um, I don't think that's a significant reduction. Of uh what was requested before. And also, I would like to address um deep's comments, which I don't believe you're going to get run into in detail about tonight. Again, I wasn't, but I listened to the tape, I watched the recording, and I believe you said at the time. The Miss Baylin quote has no problem, the C V A ran the out of tape, I I respectfully disagree. I don't think that's what um her letter said. I don't think the Miss Baylin said there's no problem. I don't think she usually aligns on whatever, or should bring an application or not. She usually, you know, expresses her opinion. And what she did say, um. I believe that she said that the reductions for July letter, July of twenty twenty three says reductions are. Over the first proposal are meaningful revision in the right direction. And that, but even with these reductions, the board could further evaluate the current um proposal. Let's do better will result in significant exposure to flood hazard. Uh, so I, I still believe that Miss Baylin's um. Concerns still has some concerns, and I believe that post residents, there's a strong possibility that it will result in greater exposure to flood hazard. As addressed, this discussed with her initial report. And also the fire chief's report, uh, thank you for responding. I I appreciate you saying it was a bit of your written response, but I think um. What you didn't respond to was still the paragraph that ends with uh continuing to allow structures of this size, unless the small. To be constructed so close together, is in my opinion, a recipe for disaster. And I still, I think that the fire chief's comment should. Give us reason to to consider that issue strongly. And uh finally, I believe that you stress that this is condominium, and I understand that and I appreciate that at their own limits. But presumably, uh, I'm not sure when the owner purchased the property, but presumably the owner knew it was condominium when they purchased it. And as we know, purchase can be self-created. And so I think we'll charge, you know, somebody buys a condo, you're charged even though there are certain limitations when you purchase a condo. So I I don't see that there's uh there's a significant reduction in non-conformities uh in this application. That is, those are my questions and um. Are there any questions in the staff? Abby?
No, but I just want to confirm to the the revision date through July nineteenth, because it's definitely the most recent possible, those changes. I've got the changes. Oh, just maybe the revision dates or any motion that they can put before they reach is is clear.
Can I just address whatever respond? Sure. That was appropriate time. Um, I, well, I I think I just want to make sure. We all understand what Marsha Ballant said, um, because I think. I see a lot of these type letters, and we know when they're inconsistent, and this one is not inconsistent. And she actually says, these reductions over the previous proposal are a meaningful revision in the right direction. In an effort to reduce threat to life and property and proportionally more consistent with C C M A. Coastal flood hazard criteria. So those statements she does make that this application is proportionally more consistent. Um, and and I think a little bit of common sense with both. Blood risk and fire risk needs to come into the room as well. Which building is a greater flood risk? Which building is a greater fire risk? The answer is the existing building is a much greater virus and a much greater flood risk than a proposed. New construction FEMA compliant state of the art building. This is nineteen twenty cottage that their same number of bedrooms that they're rightsizing. With an additional two hundred and fifty eight square feet. So I think a little bit of common sense needs to be brought into the discussion. The goal of zoning is to reduce non-conformities. And that's what we're doing here, and that's what gives you as the Z P A the ability to grant the variances. That is one hundred percent clear. So I hope you all consider that this owner, property owner, would like to do to his property, not making anything worse. Everything he's doing is an improvement over what's there now. The G F A is staying within the limit, staying within the limit, and every other aspect of zoning is improving. So these are the type of applicants that should be applauded and not cut down.
Thank you, Mr. Catala. I think you're getting repetitive, and I think it's getting a little bit dry. We've already gone again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, um, we will uh hear a public testimony. Uh, is there anyone here in the public hearing that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there? Did you raise your hand? No, I'm sorry. Uh, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? If asked for a third time, is there anyone uh here in the call who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak uh in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak neither in favor, who's neither in favor of or opposed to, but is neutral about this application? Is there anyone in the audience uh who would like to speak uh who is not in favor of or opposed to, but is. But simply wants to speak about the application. And finally, the third time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak neither in favor of or in opposition to the application? Either I'm certain sell out or any documents, um, all the documents that are in the case file, we don't have to go over them or read them aloud. But are there any documents that you wish to have read into the public?
No, I do have one comment when it's appropriate, that is.
No, it's not really, it's not appropriate right now.
Not, yeah, when when it's appropriate, that is not new crap. So uh we don't need any documents, right?
All right, I'll I'll give you like one minute.
Yeah, no, this is, I I didn't have, I forgot to address the question about um the board's considering of an application after having denied it previously.
Make it brief, please.
The statute says, no board shall be required to hear any application for the same variance. Or substantially the same variance for six months. So the question when you're answering whether we're submitting the same application or substantially the same application. We believe we presented, it's not the same application. Everything is improved significantly. G F A is way down compliant, the setback, that's what the standard is in my opinion, and we hope you uh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. So, we're relying on advice of our counsel, and it's not just whether variances. Are changed by a M V P, it's whether a change in condition has occurred. Since the previous decision or other considerations materially affecting the merits. Of the subject matter of intermediate no rest vested rights in the wisdom. Right, let's move on. Thank you. Does the board have enough information to close and public?
Yes.
George, yes, sir.
Okay, and uh, does the board have enough information to make a finding regarding both? Uh, the infinite to reverse rule and enough information to begin deliberations? Dennis, yes. Bert, yes, George? Yes, Tom, same myself, yes. Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to uh oppose the public. So it's that and Dennis, all in favor? I I can propose. All right, let's um. Next move, please, to um. Z P A twenty three eight, Z P A twenty three nine, can twenty three way. Is there someone here on the.
Yes, Mr. Joe Ren, that's in there. Uh, Indigo, where you own street, Sabro, representing uh the applicant. John, Sharon, and Paulman, and also um, this Roberta Copeland is the owner of the property for the past even years. Uh, is with us in the audience this evening as well.
I'm going to have to get set up.
Thank you.
Before we can start, I don't have any government as well, but I'll let you get your materials set up.
You could go ahead.
Okay. Okay. As I did, um, the previous application, oh, before we do that, I need to go, oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't need to ask you because this is. Uh, I'm going to ask you uh to present at the outset. To address the infinite reverse rule, which is, I'm sure you're aware, is whether the various requests and or circumstances have changed. From either uh the first application or from your previous, the second application. Was submitted in twenty twenty three to justify reversal of this previous action. And I'd like you to do that at the outset because we are going to have to make the final, we'll be making the final. As far as I can see, this application tonight, and I believe some of the staff comments in the file indicated the same thing, that this is the same application. That was submitted several months ago and um, and so I would like you to address that. But then, I hear, you can do that and then go into the order of your special station.
Yes, uh, we can do that. Um, a couple inaccuracies there, the one that was submitted several months ago, actually September of last year, that was denied in December. That was the one that the board heard, opened the herring, heard, and made a decision to deny. That's more than six months ago. Uh, so we're beyond that. We resubmitted an application, I believe in April, that was heard in May. The herring was never opened, you didn't hear that application, you didn't act on that application, you decided at the time. That the Justice Attorney Cassella just read in the record from the statute, that the changes were in your mind at the time. Were not substantial enough to reopen the application within that six months. Uh, so that was never a viable application, was never opened, it was never heard, it was never voted on. Uh, we never had a chance to present that application. There were some adjutants that represented, but just board made a decision that the. Uh, changes from the summer application in your minds were not substantial enough to uh hear it again within the six months.
I I will just, be before we continue, I will say what I said previously on record in the other application. The infinite reverse rule applies beyond a six month period. And uh, according to our staff report, we are able, we do look at in previous applications that have been submitted. There were some minor, there were some perhaps some differences between the first and second application. But there were no differences, not just, it's just not my opinion, it was some of the comments of the staff between what was submitted, but not heard in May. Uh, finish please? Thank you.
We're done.
There were no, there seemed to be no differences from what um we submitted for this year. And then what was submitted tonight.
But this year, there was no application.
Excuse me?
This year, there was an application, but you never opened.
Well, but there was an application, and I I'm just telling you that this is, that we are going to be having to make the final on that.
You can, but I don't believe that it applies to the twenty twenty three.
Okay, well. Wanted to go ahead with your presentation, then we will make our determination, but I would like you to address. The differences, if any, between your second application and this application, as well as between the first application we said.
We'll focus on the first application. This application is the same, uh, very similar to the one that we submitted in April, we're beyond the six months. So we're, we need that.
Mr. Ren, I, let's forget the six months now, please explain how the application, but we don't have to discuss the six months.
Okay, so the infinite to reverse rule, um, there's a, there's a very important word that is a little silent. Um, and it's or, so the infinite reverse rule says administrative agencies are. Infinite to reverse themselves, meaning helpless to reverse a previous decision. Unless one of two things, and it's or, it's not the end. Number one, a change of condition has occurred since its prior. That's it. If if you pass that muster, then you pass that rule. Or, number two, other considerations materially affecting the merits of the subject matter. Have intervened and no vested rights have arisen. So whether you think that it's material or not, or the changes are substantial, has nothing to do with the infinite reversal. That only has to do with the statute that Attorney Casella brought up, and that's to care within six months. So you made a decision and may, hey, that they weren't substantial enough to re-care of it in six months, but there's nowhere in here. Especially in item number one, it just says a change of condition, does not say substantial. And it does not say significant any in that. And that's black and white, and it's written red chrome, um, the legalese. So I disagree that now, ever after six months, and you don't have to make a decision that anything. Is substantial in your opinion, in our opinion, there are various substantial from the existing condition. And the proposed condition and the additional changes that we need in December. Um, and earlier this year, even further revisions that we'll go through in summary. And earlier this year, even further revisions that we'll go through in summary with you. In total, cumulatively, they're much, much improved, in our opinion, over the existing condition. And we believe that the additional changes that were made are substantial, but again, we're beyond that. We're we just have to make a change. And we've made several changes, which we'll go through. So we have a summary letter that we had submitted. And the summary letter very clearly goes through all the changes. The differences between the December, does not deny an application, and the current application.
So what letter are we referring to? I didn't see that in the file. Was that received? I believe it's in the record. Okay, but I have the date of the letter.
April fifth, twenty twenty three. And this is in file. I can leave this with you as part of the record this evening, if you would like. There are seven items on this, and we will go through them. Because I think they're each important. Four or five of them include enumerated differences in between the two applications, which we will go through. So number one, this letter. The existing house was built in nineteen twenty and does not meet any current FEMA regulations, nor does it meet current building fire safety or energy codes. The new dwelling will meet or exceed all current FEMA regulations for flood and high winds and all other applicable building and safety codes. Refer to the letter on record from the fire chief for the south location for additional information. Momentarily, we'll get a little bit more into that letter. Just want to get through the differences first. Number two, the existing septic system is antiquated, does not meet current public health code. It is functional, but it does not meet code. The proposed system meets, the proposed system meets the twenty twenty three technical standards of public health code and has been fully reviewed and approved by Pratt and is located behind the structure in this location. Number three, the existing house has four bedrooms. The twenty twenty two application proposed five bedroom house. The one change is that we reduce by twenty percent. We reduce the number of bedrooms back down to four. The maps being existing. A letter from BEP said that the bedrooms were increasing in the flood zone and so forth. So we heard that, we made changes. And we made architectural changes and changed the septic system. Reduce that from five bedrooms from the previous application down to four. Our current proposal is a four bedroom house that was all re-reviewed by Pratt. Number four, the north side yard setback. That's here, north is straight up on this plan, more or less. The north side yard setback, on this plan, the existing house is highlighted in yellow. So you can very clearly see how not conforming the existing houses. The proposed house is this dark outline and under shade, a front porch that's proposed on the front. The only variances that we are seeking is due to that open covered porch on front. The house itself meets all zoning regulations, meets GFA coverage, height setbacks, everything. The only variances that we need, coverage and front setback are because of the open covered porch in the house. We'll get into that a little bit more soon. So the north side yard setback that we started talking about. Currently, existing today, that house is one point four feet away from progress. With the twenty twenty two proposal, we increased that to ten point eight to be conformant, more than ten feet. We've eliminated all of that non-conforming outside, completely eliminated, not reduced, eliminated. With the new application, we were already conforming. So even if we pulled it back two more feet, it wouldn't matter. We're still conforming whether we're ten point eight or twelve point eight. So we couldn't make that side anymore conforming because we're a hundred percent. So that's one point four feet to ten point eighty. Nine point four feet difference in made inform. Number five, the front yard setback, non-conforming. You can see the yellow, you can see how close the steps in the front porch are to the roadway. Now, if any of you are familiar with Lake, if you go up and down, especially on the west side of the street, many of the homes, including some that we have in pictures that I'll pass around the room, have open front, open front porches that are close to the street so they can greet their neighbors as they pass by. It's been like that since nineteen twenty hours before built. We're proposing to add an open cover porch, but have it much more conforming than the existing open cover porch. And just that, again, that that open covered porch on that side, and Stu Lathers is here, is the project architect. We'll go through building with you, but the two variances that we're requesting both have to do with the front yard, the front yard and the covered porch, nothing else. The house is beyond the twenty five foot setback. So the front yard setback. In twenty twenty two, we were five point two feet to the street line from the steps to the street line, to the road, to the street line. We propose to increase that to twelve point six. So two and a half times roughly, two hundred fifty percent roughly increasing five point two to twelve point sixty plus seven point forty in the previous application. In this application, that now improved to sixteen, so an additional three point four feet. And what was done to do that is you can see the stairs here. Those stairs were outbound, so you have full use of the open covered porch, which is this box here. These stairs were outbound. What the architect creatively designed was to recess those stairs in to make it the minimum and the porch to minimum dimension, or minimum reasonable dimension of the porch, and then the minimal reasonable dimension for safety and access and ingress to the house, the distance between the steps and the house, which maximized the distance between the last step and the street line. So that went from five point two to twelve point six to sixteen, so five point two feet to sixteen feet, turtle, more than. And in the previous application, the complete house, Stu, correct me if I'm wrong, but right to the front edge, there's house volume above the porch, correct?
Correct, and Stu Lathers, architect, okay, then, three one nine, next three, it's good to see you all again. But to Joe's points, all of the houses on Lake, and you can see some of these in our, in our three D modeling. We haven't modeled every house, but we can see that often there was indeed a line of porches, all not conforming by today's rules and all with enclosed second stories and even attics above the ground porch. So you can see on this, you sure you've seen that already, sorry to you off there, that all these houses would follow this same line. And of course, we're only putting on, in this case, a shed roof of one story porch, the roof above the porch open. All the other houses, both on this side, the west side, as well on the east side, often have second stories or attics over them. So, so we're not proposing any sort of bulk that beyond a one story porch to match the others, but I'm digressing.
This is a picture of the existing house, and I'll pass this to Ronnie, he goes to the record. But you can see that the whole, right up to the peak roof, peak height of the house, you can see that there's house volume above that porch. And there are also solid walls around the porch. The porch that's being proposed is lower to the ground, it's completely open, so for sight lines you can see right through it. And it only has a shed roof. Like Stu had mentioned, there is no house volume above. The wall, the vertical wall of the house is, has been pushed back twenty five plus feet and is conformant. So the whole volume of the house, the walls, the floor sides of the house is conformant. Only that front covered porch, open covered porch, is a matter of our discussion. So we, with the previous application and this application, we've eliminated that second story volume completely out of the front yard setback, where it is now, as you can see with that photo. And while we're on that topic, obviously, this picture around, this is looking from the subject property north. For these two properties here that all have similar porches and house volume above those porches. We're not asking for that. We're just asking for the low roof, open covered porch. So five finishes up to say that what's being proposed is in harmony with several other homes along the west side and east side of Lake Avenue that also have open front porches within front yard setbacks. However, many of those homes, like Stu said, have house volume above, and we're not, we don't have that. Number six, the proposed gross floor area. The original application last fall had forty percent. We didn't need a variance for it. We meet the regulation of forty percent. And the BEP letter said, your increase in floor area and your increase in bedrooms. So with the change, we reduced that bedroom that we added. Like I said before, four to five act on the floor. And the gross floor area modestly sized house with a forty percent, we were at two thousand two hundred thirty square feet. It's not a condominium, there are not multiple buildings on this, there's just one building, it's twenty two thirty two square feet. Although it was conforming, we still made a change to that GFA. We reduced it by a hundred and fifty square feet down to just over two thousand square feet and two thousand eighty two square feet. And that gross floor area is consistent or smaller than all the homes on Lake Avenue. It's not McMansion, it's not five, six thousand square feet. Much bigger than any of the other homes. It's in harmony, as you can see on Stu's dimension renderings there. That is very similar in size to all the other homes. We got into this, I got out of my order, like Chairwoman said, so I was completely going through this, and now I'll just start the order, because there's some important factors, like existing conditions, where the flood zone are and all that. But we got into this, so we'll just finish up this portion. Number seven in this letter, we're almost complete here. The existing ground coverage. So today, as the house sits, you can see the yellow area, and also there's a paved driveway. So the current ground coverage, as stated in the application and also in the zoning table, is thirty five point three percent. So next to the bottom line, we have floor area and right above that, we have coverage. The allowable in the zone is twenty percent. We're currently at thirty five point three, almost double, right? What is, what's there? It's been like that since nineteen twenty or nineteen twenty two when the house was built. Maybe the driveway got paved later, but still they're at thirty five, more than thirty five percent. With the original application last fall, we reduced that by eight point one percent. And that eight point one percent is equal to four hundred and fifty two square feet. Pretty large area, you know, probably bigger than this room, or closer to the side of this room. Reducing, reduction of coverage. The new application, so that went from, just step back one second, it went from thirty five point three percent to twenty seven point two percent, so much closer to conforming more than halfway there by reducing it by the four hundred fifty two square feet. The current application that's in front of you further reduces that ground coverage by another one point five percent or another eighty one square feet for a total of five hundred and thirty three square feet. So that is, you know, like a twenty by twenty seven area, right? It's pretty big. Some houses some houses are small houses, the condominiums are outside. So twenty by twenty seven, we're reducing the coverage by that amount down to twenty five point seven percent. So we went from thirty five point three existing twenty seven point two, last at the original application, twenty five point seven now. So we're close. The only thing that puts us over again is that cover. So that is a total reduction of five hundred and thirty three square feet. By reducing the ground coverage, eliminating the paved driveway, making the site more pervious, stormwater is reduced and stormwater quality is enhanced, and that's part of the CAM application as well. So the paved driveway is proposed to be removed, reduce coverage. Now that we're conforming on the north side, the driveway is shifted to the north side, and that's a pervious driveway. It's no longer paved. So it's open to infiltrate the stormwater. Now, in addition to this letter, what we didn't state in the past, you can clearly see it on this plan with the yellow. On the side yard setback in the north side, this area here that is completely eliminated out of the side yard is three hundred and three square. So we're taking three hundred and three square feet of existing house that's not performing, eliminate, anywhere. All of that, and that's to the setback lines, not to the new house. The new house is even a few more inches away from that line. But to the setback lines, three hundred and three square feet. The front, this area here. Currently, there is five hundred and twenty five square feet in the twenty five, what, twenty yard setback, five hundred and twenty five square feet. We are reducing that to one hundred and seventy five. About third. And so we're reducing it by two thirds, to one third, to a hundred and seventy five square feet, major reduction in anybody's eyes. That's very large reduction. And again, increasing the conformity and reducing the existing non-formities by quite a bit. The other way we looked at that is not only the area, but as you can see in that picture, there's a gambrel roof that rolls off onto the north side, but this is the gable end on the east side of the roadside. That's where all that house document is. So by reducing all of that out of there, we are reducing the volume, the bulk volume in the front setback by eighty three hundred cubic feet, huge number. Full stories, attic, all the way back, full gambrel, in that area, eighty three hundred cubic feet. The side yard is a little less, it's longer, but again, the gambrel rolls off. So on that side, we're reducing actually, the eighty three hundred is total.
Or that's now, that was just, just the volume reduction in the front setback.
So the side, this reduction, but we already went through the area, three hundred and three feet to zero. Reducing that not formally in the side saves, pulls another three thousand cubic feet out of the restricted area. So we're pulling over eleven thousand cubic feet of house that's existing, that's been there a hundred years out of the restricted setback. Huge increase in form by any stretch of the imagination. The other thing that this does is we're only a foot from the property line. So we're very close to this other structure. Still, we'll get more into this. But with a brand new house, that meets all the codes. We have a letter, there's a letter in the file that was written back in March, but there was a memo that went into the file that said this letter is still valid. And the letter from your fire chief, Brian Manware, said that the new house with the new construction, further, you can see how much further from that adjacent house is much safer than the existing houses today. And with this, another change in the recent application, this application is included on your architectural plans, we have added, we gave ES box emergency access box. And we have added the recording fire alarm system. So all of that is part of the application. It's mentioned in this letter. It's a much safer structure from building fire safety energy and also FEMA. So what hasn't been mentioned yet is we are partially in a flood zone. You can see the flood zone line on the plan. Since the flood zone line, we're right on the fringe of it, since the flood. Since the flood zone line, we're right on the fringe of it. Since the floods online hits the house, the whole house has to be. So we have a crawl space that's soon designed with proper flood events. We have the strapping, we have all the, um, all the sheer control throughout the walls. It's all been designed by our shuck homes near. So. A lot of people think FEMA, oh, it's just flood, just water, but it's actually wind as well. Uh, high winds. So this new house. Is designed for, to resist all, it was a hundred thirty mile an hour. This is. Hundred thirty mile an hour wind zone. And it's lifted up above the flood, so it meets all FEMA regulations. Plus the town's flood ordinance applies in addition to that. Um, so all of that is met with this new structure. The existing house, you can see it's sitting on the ground since nineteen twenty. And is very subject to uh, flooding uh, during a high water event or a high wind event. Um, so. We mentioned the septic system before, that's code compliant. The house is code compliant. The house is FEMA compliant. Those in itself. Are. Reductions of existing non-conforming. The existing house is not conforming to FEMA, not conforming to health, not conforming to building, fire, safety, everything. It's not conforming really to anything. So we're making it more conforming to all of those things plus knowing. And it's the spirit in the intent of the regulations and your plan of development to have more compliant and safer structures. Uh, coastal resilience is added in your plan of development. Building a house like this. Is a step in the right direction for coastal resilience. Um, another thing that's mentioned in your plan of development is uh. Harmony with the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. We showed you photographs of the open porch. The main crux of the variances to get that coverage, which they want to match the neighborhood. They want to keep the charm of the existing house as it's been the last hundred plus years. Um, that's all they're asking for. Without that porch. We don't need any variances. But it's just going to be a flat base of a house. And it's not going to be something that. Any of us really. Um, would be proud of. But it would conform to zoning regulations. If we took that front porch off. We would conform, but it's not. You can see this wouldn't be consistent with the neighborhood. And would absolutely destroy the charm, the look, feel, the harmony of the neighborhood. Um, now, after all that discussion. Um, I'll get back into the. Normal outline. We've kind of touched on almost all of, um. The outline. So I'll just go through here and make sure that we're not missing anything. The first thing I was going to discuss with the sign that was posted, the photo was sent in for the record. Um, so that is all set. We already went through the history of the application. Um, we already went through the existing house. Um, what's being proposed. Um, I just touch on a few things. There's some elements that we haven't talked about yet. Um, eliminating the paved driveway, pervious driveway this side. Putting the house in, centering the house, making it more conforming. There are some open patios. Uh, pervious paper patio, so they do not count as coverage. Um, code compliant septic system for four bedrooms. And then, of course, uh, utilities coming into, uh, into the house. All the utilities are underground as well. And all of those will meet today's votes. Uh, the variances that are requested, we touched on this, um, then specifically. Talk about them. So in the zoning table. What we do is bold the areas that we're asking for variances. So there are just two uh, categories that are bolded. The first one is ground coverage. We talked about that in depth. We're still over the twenty percent, twenty five point seven. But we're more than ten percent reduced. Which the E P said in a letter that I heard this evening was a substantial reduction. Uh, in their, in their eyes, um, in floor area, but we have a ten percent reduction in coverage. Um, but we're still over the twenty percent. And again, it's only because of the. Covered front, which. Match the name. So it's coverage and then front yard setback. We've enumerated a few different items, uh, but the closest one. Is sixteen point zero feet, I believe is the dimension, and that's to the step. And we've minimized that hardship is, you know, that. That dimension as much as possible. Um, on the back of the property, we have to be ten feet from the property line with the septic. We have the width of the leaching field. Then we have to be ten feet to the house. We have the house in this step now that's pulled in and recessed. Into, which is another change from the twenty twenty two application. Um. This variance that we're asking for at sixteen feet is the minimum. Um, necessary to this application. And that again increases from five to. The hardship. We have here. And it's included in your application, of course. And I'll just uh, read this in a short note. The subject property is a small non-conforming lot of record. The lot area is five thousand five hundred seventy nine point six square feet. Uh, which is fifty five point eight percent of the minimum required lot area. It's almost half the size of which. The existing house was constructed in nineteen twenty. Well before the town zoning regulations and FEMA regulations were adopted. The existing house is not conforming uh, to front. And side yard. Uh, not conforming to coverage. Not conforming to FEMA regulations and not conforming to kind of public health. This proposal substantially reduces the front yard setback. Like we talked about from five point two to sixteen feet. Eliminates the existing side yard non-conforming. This here eliminates that sort of conformity. Reduces the coverage from thirty five point three to twenty five point seven, almost ten percent. And also eliminates existing FEMA and health code non-conformity. No new non-conformities are proposed and no existing non-conformity is worse with this application. Everything is better, processable. This project will result on a more conforming property and structure and will be in performance. With current building, fire, FEMA and health code regulations. Therefore is consistent with the town plan of development and will preserve property values and enhance safety of surrounding. Uh, properties and residents. The letter from the fire chief. We have that here. Stated March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. And. He simply states, upon review of the application and a meeting in the landings office. Um, should this application be approved, the applicant has agreed to the following fire department requests, monitored fire alarm system, E A S box. Um, also, in addition to those two items. The installation on this north side, since that's the closest to any other structure. Uh, installation of non-combustible sheathing. On that side. So even if this other house caught fire. This sheeting on this side is non-combustible. So in addition to the E A S bar. The fire alarm system, we have non-combustible materials on that side. As well. So it's as much fire protection as you really can have. Uh, there was some discussion before about sprinklers, but again, it's, it's always called prohibitive. It's not required by any code at this point in time, so that's not proposed. But as he states in the letter, the fire department request for those three things, and we've complied with all three. They're included in the files. The next statement is the distances between structures on abutting properties were reviewed during the meeting. Um. He says he understands that patient's previous, there was a comment that the house is not safer or whatever, um, that doesn't really apply here, uh, but. The last statement here, summary statement is, is key. Um, he states that from the fire department standpoint, I can assure you. That the construction standards, practices and building codes that new construction must meet. Far exceeds what the current structure on the property required when it was built. Of course, that was a hundred years ago. Um, so the codes, as we all know. Um, are much, much stricter than they are then, and essentially what he's saying is that the proposed house is much safer. Um, from all of these elements, especially fire, his eyes, than the existing structure if it were to stay where it is. Uh, we talked about harmony along the street. We talked about coastal resilience. Uh, we had a bunch of letters of support. Um, I believe all of these were submitted to zoning. Um, Sherry, do you have fourteen? Letters of support?
I have not commented then. But that's why I.
Okay. So what I would like to do is. We made a nice key map. Of the whole street. And what you'll see on here is in blue. And enumerated, you'll see all the folks on Lake Avenue who wrote an individual letter of support. Uh, for this property. And then we'll figure out which letters are in the record, which ones are.
I'm planning to read all the letters into the record.
Uh, no, there has. No, as I just said, if there are ones that are not unfiled, those ones are only. And it seems to know which ones are uh, unfiled. So. Sherry, if I could just go through the list and you tell me which ones you have, which ones you don't. If you have all of them, great. There may be one or two that we want to read, uh. But other than that, we can just acknowledge them and we'll move on. Uh, so the first one I have, Sherry, and start at the bottom of the street and go up. Um. So it's number twenty eight. Is it okay if I just give you the number of the address or do you want the name?
Um, I would say both.
Yeah, listen, though they've been entered into the record under name, not address.
Okay, so I'll go with last name. So we have number twenty eight, Diello?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, number twenty six, uh, DiZella, DiZella?
Yes.
Okay. Number twenty five. Uh, Forrest here.
Yes.
Okay. Um, number twenty two, which is. I know I'm not going to get this one right, but solid. Cur, solid curve?
Yes.
Good luck. Sitter, okay. There's an L in there. You got that one?
Yes.
Okay, number twenty. Uh. Twenty is the president of the association. So the president of Beach Park, um, residence association, I assume. Uh, wrote a letter of support, he owns a property at twenty, Blake Avenue. You have that one?
The name?
Uh, Ed Sullivan.
Yes.
And we have nineteen. Uh, Sid, hello? Yes, Sid, hello?
That's.
Sixteen. Is Gorlick.
Yes.
Fifteen. Here is Malone. M A L. Yes. Um, fourteen is Hello, Hello. E D L.
D L O U S?
Yes, yes. Uh, number eleven. Paravante?
Paravanti, yeah.
Paravanti, okay. Uh, ten, Cohen?
Owen, yes.
Okay, nine is. Primak? Primak? P R I?
Don't see that one.
Don't see that one? Uh, six is Weinre. W V I N?
No.
And number three is the last one, I think, fourteen. And that one is Dream Blatt.
What number was that?
Three.
Yes.
Uh, so the two you don't have are six and nine. Those are short. I will read those quickly. Um, and I asked Mr. Kaufman, I know there were one or two that he wanted me to read into the record, um. Which ones? Malone? Malone, okay. Do you know the address?
Here's on, here's on.
Okay, tell me the address. I have them highlighted by address. Number.
Here about people at him, they mobile.
One is. Uh, fifteen. So Paravante and Malone? Yeah, it was Sullivan. Oh. Okay. So we will read the two you don't have and then three, uh, we think are important to read into the records, to read those. Uh, so we'll start with number six. Which is from Adam Weinre. And he writes, um. This was emailed to Kathy Sherry and Abby, um, but I'm glad we went through them, just to make sure we get them all on the record. Um, good afternoon. As a lifelong resident of sixth Blake Avenue Clinton, you should know that I strongly support and endorse the plans of Robert Kaufman and family to construct a new residence at twenty three Blake Ave. I have known the Kaufman family for years. They are conscientious and considerate neighbors on our street. I have reviewed the plans carefully and believe they would enhance our street. I've also spoken with neighbors immediately adjacent to the Kaufmans and have heard no objections to their plans. So I urge you to approve the latest iteration of their new residence, respect. Respectively, Adam, wanting that. Number six, and I'll give you a paper copy of that. Um, nine was the other one. This is from Jay Primak. Uh, nine, Lake Avenue. Honorable members of the Clinton Connecticut zoning authority. I'm writing to express my support for the proposed construction related to the property owned by Roberta Kaufman family at twenty three Blake Avenue, Blake, Connecticut. I am the present owner of the home at nine Blake Ave. My family has owned our home continuously since the nineteen forties. And I know the Kaufman family to have an upstanding, responsible and caring members of our town and small community. The Kaufmans have shared with me the drawings and plans for their proposed construction of their home. And in my opinion, the design and size of the structure substantially enhances the existing beauty and character of our neighborhood. It also seems reasonable to assume that replacement of their decades old property with a structure that. Uses current building materials and modern construction techniques will also serve to improve not only the safety of the occupants, but also my family and of our neighbors. I ask for your support and approval of their request. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, J M Prime. And I'll give you that paper copy as well. So if you got a mouse, don't forget. Two that you don't have. And the owner requests that these three are written to the record. Eleven. And this is from Paula Paravante. Hello, all. I'm writing to all of you today in regards to the proposed plans for twenty three Blake Avenue. First, a little history for you. My family has owned a home on Lake Avenue since nineteen sixty seven, so for a total of fifty six years. We have known the Kaufman family for all that time and know that. They have the best interest of the neighborhood at heart. The neighborhood is certainly engaging, including my own family home. And. Is in desperate need of money. As a side note, I currently manage a team in the Northeast that builds all the bank and Merrill locations, including retail branches. U S Trust and Merrill Lynch locations. I have a background in design and architecture, so I'm familiar with understanding drawings and knowing good design. With that said, I reviewed the architect's elevations for the renovation work and believe that he has done a great job of keeping the character of the street intact. He works. Keeping the character of the street intact. East elevation or the Blake Avenue facade is very similar to what is there today with the current front step. The north side, which is adjacent to the current neighbor, actually looks like it gives more room between the houses now, which is very appealing. In addition, the lining up of the front porches is a great idea and will also be in keeping with the adjacent homes. In general, I give my support to these plans and hope that you will as well. Feel free to reach out to me. Thank you for your support of our neighborhood. Best regards, Paula L. Paravant. Fifteen, and then one more after this. Fifteen is Peter Malone. I'm writing on behalf of Roberta Kaufman and her pending application twenty three Blake Avenue. I'm writing on behalf of Roberta Kaufman and her pending application twenty-three Blake Avenue, new dwell. Before you were, as a fellow resident of Blake Avenue, I've been afforded the opportunity to look at the designs and plans for the proposed new home. And I know I speak for many of our road by saying, I'm entirely supportive of her efforts. Clearly, the architects, engineers and surveyors have done great plans to deliberate all of the various factors and challenges of replacing a hundred-two-year-old house on a small lot with poles, one that was built way before any modern day regulations. And I believe their experience in dealing with local issues is on full display with these plans. The vital role that the zoning regulations play with the municipality's long-term designs are well-understood. However, there are simply times when through no one's fault, a square peg has to be allowed to fit into a round hole. After all, the objective is never to completely handcuff the owner's ability to improve their own property. And the efforts this group has made with these plans bring everything significantly closer to fully conforming or impressive. The integrity of the neighborhood will not only be preserved but enhanced by the project. The upgrades to current codes of all the mechanicals, steamer rigs, as well as fire safety compliances will be a boost for all the residents of the privately maintained road. On a personal note, Roberta Kaufman and the extended Kaufman family have been an integral part of Clinton Seaside community for decades and are generally good people who wish to do everything right the right way. Completion of this project will not only be a benefit to the Beach Park Road Association and its residents, but to the town of Clinton as well. I hope your board finds its way to work with the Kaufmans on this project, as I am confident it will be mutually beneficial to all in both long and short terms. Thank you for your consideration and please feel free to contact me should you have any questions, sincerely, Peter Malone. Last one, number twenty. There, Lori Jaffe and members of the Clinton CBA. I'm writing this email letter on behalf of the Beach Park Road Association. Uh this is from Ed Sullivan and he's the president of the Beach Park Road Association or B P R A. The association was legislated into existence in the nineteen fifties and consists of the homes on Blake Avenue in Clinton and one home located on Cross Avenue. I understand plans for a replacement home to be located on Blake Avenue was proposed by John Kaufman and his family and are before the board. As a president of the association, any plan for new construction or additions to all homes within the association must be approved by the president. I have reviewed and approved the proposed plans John Kaufman has for his new home at twenty-three Blake Ave. This proposed new home will certainly be enhancement to our street. The replacement residents will also provide much-needed relief to his neighbor, neighbor moving the setback from two, actually one point four, and he says to seven, but it's ten point eight, it's conforming. I also understand the present setback requirement is most likely ten feet. However, any movement in the direction will be wrong, so again, we're ten point eight. I understand his request for variances for replacement residents. I believe this use variance is appropriate as a hardship as the existing residence predate zone is in a state of disrepair requiring major extensive renovation and is present presently most likely not conforming as it presently sits based on existing zoning requirements. Understanding each situation is unique, I believe that Clinton Board of Appeals has approved variance along these lines of argument in the past. I have known the Kaufman family for over five decades, yes, I'm getting old. And know they will not only do what they were proposing, but also add to the enhancement of our association with the project. I humbly request you approve the application to tear down the old structure and build this new house respectfully. Yours, Ed Sullivan, President of the Beach Park Association. Uh, President, yes.
Just right, um how much do you worry about, I need to take a break, five minutes is getting late, so how much do you want to do?
Um probably now would be a good break because now we're going to let Stu uh show you the house.
Okay, how much longer is your presentation?
Uh I I would need five minutes. And I I believe our clients would like to say a few words as well.
Let's take a five-minute break. It's nine minutes, it's fifty-five.
Uh hello again, Stu Lathers, architect for the Lake Avenue Project. Uh I just want to talk for a moment uh about some of the quantitative questions uh we talked about. Architects and engineers have to do continuing education to keep their license. Uh I just did a course this summer on fire safety. And this is from, this is a slide from the course that we took and had to take a test. And you can see, of course, that in this slide, sorry, here, the in, it's a fire, fire heat transfer is related to the inverse square. So what that means is if you double the distance from a house to a house, it's not half the heat load, it's one fourth the heat load. So in in the Kaufman's case, they're going one and a half times further away than what is there now. And seeing this graph, that means they've reduced the heat transfer from a a fire in the neighboring house by half, by going one and a half times away. I just wanted to make that point, so we we, you know, we have some sense of it, you know, as to what the values are when when we're talking about uh any of these applications, actually, to to talk about the balance, what's actually, what's actually there. Uh one other thing I wanted to dwell on, this was just a uh I can leave these drawings to Abby if you'd like, uh this is a page from a structural design book that we we have in our office, it compares nineteen twenty-two wood framing before the invention of plywood to modern wall construction by wood sheeting, correct nailing. And the the factors over here, uh at the at the right of the page, uh you know, we count the nineteen twenty-two construction as a factor of one. And if we're down here into a half-inch uh plywood correctly nailed and blocked, the improvement factor is eight point nine. So I just wanted to put a little value, a little bit of an understanding of what the actual change is, has been. Uh leaving alone structural steel and all the other fancy tricks that that we can employ, but just staying basic with wood framing, we can see that it that it's it's we're able to really drive an improvement in terms of structure, in terms of what the ability of a building to resist wind forces uh by a significant amount, not not a little bit. Uh so that said, that's all on that there, and I just wanted to reiterate that I think for you all zoning board of appeals, you know, the the question your reason of existence, it seems to me is, you know, what to do with the neighborhood that has all the houses in a row non-conforming. And you know, the sort of the odd one out here, I think it was one of the earliest on the street, is as Joe's drawing shows, it's very far out in terms of its uh front yard projection, so you know, that's up to you to figure out what to do with uh zoning uh regs that came in in sixty-five, a house that came in nineteen twenty-two and our hundred-year subsequent effort to try to correct uh neighborhood design. I I I think that uh just in closing that uh that John wants to speak a minute, uh but I think that we have, that you can see on Joe's map uh so many letters of support, and of course, the Kaufmans are great folks. Uh but I think that the true idea is that this is opening the speed up, sort of correcting the view for everybody to the north on that street gets a correct view of the water. When when we, when we take the house, these drawings here show uh the existence or show how much of the ship back we're getting, so we've never done this on a drawing before, this project was to show the existing house that kind of a transparent dose to to see how much the ship, that eleven thousand cubic foot uh reduction in in combined and uh brought when I said that, so, but tha- that's all I have, I just, any questions on on the architectural design side of this?
Okay, so. Stuart, when you say eight.
Excuse me, excuse me. If somebody in the audience in the phone wants to speak, could you please address it to me?
Can I ask? Sure. Sorry, my name is John Kauf.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah.
If it's free, if it's free, this is the National Public.
So you say eight percent improvement on the way, is that eight hundred percent?
Eight hundred percent, eight times.
Yeah.
Modern versus nineteen twenty-two, that's it. That's it, okay, Joe.
Uh Roberta Kaufman, who sold the property, I'm going to live there for the past eighty years, would like to say a few words to address you.
Hello, Mr. Stott. Hi, I'm Roberta Kaufman. Yeah, I'll be too. Having my living for kids done. I moved to twenty-three Blake Avenue when I was three years old. My parents scraped together all they had to purchase a home our family would enjoy for many years. We had an opportunity to spend the summers at a beautiful spot not too far from our home in Hartford. I kind of remember the excitement my whole family had about moving to the shore. I now realize that my father had a vision on how he would keep my family together. I have now been a summer resident in Clinton for eighty years. I see some of you doing the math as to how old I am. I have a storybook tale of the Blake Avenue.
Could you please silence your phones?
My first summer in nineteen forty-three in our new summer home was one of the books. I would spend the summer with my New York cousins who also have a house on Blake Avenue, and this was so special. With no air conditioning in nineteen forty-three, summertime was a season for being outdoors, that's exactly what we would do. Blake Avenue has always been a friendly street where neighbors mingle. Being at the bottom of the street, all our neighbors had to pass our house and get to the beach, we made such good friends on our street. Like most of the houses on Blake, we have a beautiful front porch facing the street. My family would always spend time on this front porch where we could say hello to all the neighbors coming to the beach. Because we have always had a large tree in our front yard that provides shade on the street and porch, I sometimes wonder if the neighbors think we talk to us or we're actually relieving their feet from the scorching hot street. In this, it was this young handsome fellow from four houses up from ours that would stand on the street and look up to our porch and talk to us for hours. Realizing the street was probably starting to burly, we would invite him up and his siblings to our porch. This went on day after day throughout the summer, I was always sad when Lady Jane approached because it meant we were leaving Clinton and leaving my beach friends for another school year. Well, this story went on for years, I was fortunate enough to spend all my summers on Blake Avenue and as a young man that I met when I was three. Three years old would come up to our porch and visit me and my family. Eighteen years after that first encounter with that young handsome man, we got married. We were truly a Blake Avenue match, or some say summer loving. Alan and I got to spend the next fifty-seven summers on that story porch with our kids and our grandchildren. Now I stand here humbly as I ask you for your blessing to allow me and my family to continue our tradition on Blake Avenue with a front porch. Our home is a hundred and three years old, it is in great need of replacement. We are trying to build a new, more updated version of what we have, keeping with the street things and setbacks. For the safety of our neighbors and family and for the beautification of our street and the financial advantage of our lovely Clinton, we gravely ask for your approval to move into a new era with our home. Our intentions, as you've heard, is to construct a home that will benefit our neighbors, first responders, family and the town. Now that my family has had the pleasure of Clinton for four generations, I humbly ask for your vote for progress that will benefit everyone and carry on the beautiful memory of my husband now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, not bad.
We done?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Ren. Now it's time for um any questions from the comments from the board. Or?
I'll say.
I have a few. Thank you for your presentation. The first question is, and let's not, I I don't want to, I don't want to entertain any discussion about six-month rule or whatever, it's a simple question. How is the application twenty-three point one different from this application? It's just a, it's basically a, your answer, okay?
The answer is, I don't believe that you compare it to that application because you've never opened that.
Okay, Mr. Ren, my question is, I have comments from the staff. In my review of the file, it seems that it's the same application and seeking the same variances. Am I wrong?
Compared to the December application?
No, just, no. My question is, how does the most recent application that was presented but, and the decision was made not to hear it, and this current application, are they the same? And if not, how are they different? In terms of the, in terms of the variances requested?
They are the same as uh.
Okay.
Variance request.
Okay, thank you. The impotent to reverse rule, and we discussed this at length, and I'm very brief. But in it's my view that the variance is requested when circumstances affecting the property. I don't believe that they've changed in a manner that justifies the perceived divorce previous decisions. Both the decisions. I don't believe that the applicant has pointed to any zoning changes since the end of twenty twenty-two or into twenty twenty-three or any changed circumstances of the site. In twenty-three-one, the application twenty-three-one that was presented to the boards earlier this year and this application are asking for the same variances. And we haven't discussed um yet the deep analysis. But Marcy Baylen's analysis is not, the assessment has not changed from her assessment about Z B A twenty-three-one. The previous, the the April or May application, this application. But even putting aside the evidence of reverse rule, I don't believe that the applicant has shown a traditional hardship, something that is unique, particular to this property. And and your basis, the basis of the application is a reduction of non-conformities, which is certainly of, can be a basis for granted, but variance. But in this case, uh I don't uh believe that the reduction to sixteen for your front yard setback proposal is, I don't believe that that's significant. Yes, sixteen is a larger, it's a bigger setback that you've been previously suggested. But it's considerably less than twenty-five, the difference is ninety. And the twenty-five percent ground coverage that you're seeking in the proposal is considerably about twenty percent. As I indicated a moment ago, Marcy Baylen indeed has not changed her analysis from the previous review. Uh she does say that there, I believe she said that in her letter of August eighth, twenty twenty-three, and this is in the record, our office recognizes this um that the G F A has been reduced and the veteran, number of veterans has been reduced, and these reductions, while a meeting for revision in the right direction, do not necessarily negate all the issues or violations as set forth below, as she attached her letter of April seventeen. So I believe that Dee's recommendation the significant expansion of living space not be allowed in flood-prone areas, especially a non-conforming near-in-size loss, I believe her analysis upon which this board has opined twice, I I believe that her comments still bear uh carry a lot of weight with me. And it's true that it's a divorce expression, whether it's granted variance where there's no legal hardship, or where there's a proposed reduction elimination of non-conformities. And it's up to the board to consider whether the structure could be built in a manner that reports with all regulatory requirements, it lessens the existing non-conformities given more. And I, my last comment is really a question to you, and then I'll be finished. If the owner was to build a residence that complied with all zoning requirements, all setbacks, et cetera, would the owner be able to have a reasonable just? Yes, yes or no?
It's not a yes or no. It's not a yes or no answer. All depends who says it's reasonable.
I'm asking for your opinion. If the owner was to build a residence that complied with all of the requirements, for example, with a setback of twenty-five at the front and maximum ground coverage of twenty percent, would the owner be able to have a reasonable just for a home?
So my answer, and I think it's probably the same as the owner, respond as well. I would say no. What's being proposed is a two thousand square foot.
Right, so not reasonable. That's all I'd like to know is where we need to move along. Why would it not?
Today's modern construction, it would be probably the smallest house on Blake Avenue, it would be just too small and too narrow.
So it's because it would be the smallest house that it would not be reasonable?
What they're asking for with these variances is a front porch that's been there forever. That matches the character of the neighborhood, the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So they wouldn't be able to have that porch and enjoy like they have for the past eighty years, I can just say. Additionally, they could go to that twenty-five foot setback. They could build a larger house with more bedrooms as well. So this plan is a blend of.
No, I don't want to get into the plan.
No, but I do.
Well, I know, but my question is.
I'm allowed to speak. Because this is a very important point that.
But is this repetitive of what you've said?
It's not repetitive. We haven't said this yet. We haven't said this yet, but you just touched on it. So I want to make sure something's clear. So we could build a house that's compliant with the front yard setback. The only thing in there right now is the porch. We could build a house right now, we have thirty-seven percent and change whatever for floor area, we could go to forty percent. We could go to, with the nice sandy soil back here, we could probably go to a five, six, seven-bedroom house. So we're adding bedrooms and we're adding floor area, another couple hundred square feet of floor area, which goes against what Marcy Ballant said in her letter. She asked us to reduce floor area, reduce bedrooms, which is what we did. She said there are material changes for the better in her letter. She specifically said that. Yes, it's not a twelve-hundred-square-foot house, it's a two-thousand square. It's not three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, it's a two-thousand-square house we're talking. It's completely compliant with every, except for prior setback and a little bit.
Okay, we've answered my question. Thank you. Okay, are there any comments or questions from the staff? None at this time? Okay, at this point, we will take a public testimony. It looks like there are people here. And I would also ask because the hour, the people are going to speak, and they would keep it, we want to keep moving along. So I have to ask three times, is there anyone here at the hearing, any member of the public wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here at the hearing wishes to speak in favor of the application? I have to ask a third time. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. Oh, okay. Yes, please, please come up and please identify yourself, my name and address, thank you.
I'm Lila Forestery, twenty-five Blake Avenue. I live next door to the.
Thank you.
I, I'm really confused. All they're asking for is a porch. Everything else complies and just, and then just flabbergasted that there's no problem.
Well. What did the public test of this public hearing is, do you, we want to speak in favor of it, I think?
Absolutely.
Okay.
My house burned down to the ground about twenty years. And we were very fortunate on our street that the wind was blowing offshore. Because if it was blowing inshore like it usually does, most of the street would be gone. And my house burned out because of faulty wiring in the walls of the bathroom on the second floor. Their house is older than mine, is older than mine. And it's just a powder keg waiting to blow. We need to have it remodeled. We need a new house there. And I just, you know, I think, to me, as an outsider of politics or rules or regulations, you know, what is the purpose of having a planning board? If you, if you can't understand plans, I just, I'm just so flabbergasted. There's a problem.
Well, thank you for your input, and we appreciate your comments. And the board is doing its job to review applications. Thank you.
I think you should make an exception.
Thank you for your comments. And I thought, oh, yes, there was another. Hi, please identify.
I'm Roberta's son. Fortunate to live in the house for fifty-five years.
And you were saving us?
Yeah, twenty-three point, yeah. So I appreciate everyone's time and thank you. I know a lot of your volunteers and it's getting late, so I'll be brief.
Could you speak up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so. You know, we've been working on this project for over a year and a half. We feel like we, you know, hired some of the best people in the industry and they understand the law, they understand construction, engineering, et cetera, extremely well. I think they demonstrated that today. We're, I, I'm also kind of like flabbergasted this. And we're trying to make an improvement to our home and to our street and to our neighbors, make it a much safer home on Blake Avenue. I mean, the, the house really is, is dangerous at this point, as far as we're concerned. We're trying to do something good. We're trying to make it within reason. We went through a process once with you guys and you explained to us why you weren't happy with it. And we addressed it directly. You, you, you said to us, you don't want a five-bedroom home up there, whether it was deep or you as the board. We totally respected that. We reduced the bedrooms. You also asked us a couple of other things as far as the non-conformity. We made it significantly more conforming on the front setback. I personally, I think, you know, what was it, nine feet? The increase? I, I don't know the technical, it was five, three, sixteen. Yeah, five, it's sixteen. So, you know, my feeling is we, we have done, you know, very significant things. We, we've been good, you know, citizens of Clinton forever. We're not trying to like recreate something and do something unreasonable. We're trying to build a two thousand square foot home. And, and, you know, it's, it's not some crazy, you know, home that we're trying to, you know, outnumber the neighborhood. Our, you know, our house to the left is double the size of us. The house in front of us will be larger by two hundred feet. The house diagonal, which was built ten years ago, is twenty-eight hundred square feet, and it's smaller than ours. So we're trying to be within reason. We took your suggestions. We made drastic changes. Quite honestly, I know it's not your problem, but we, we have spent so much time, so much effort, we and so much financial resources trying to get this done. And like, we, we just want to do something that goes along with the neighborhood, and we feel like we've done that. I went to fourteen of our neighbors on our street and all fourteen of them were more than happy to write us a letter supporting it. And I, I hope you guys take the time to read them because they're really heartfelt letters. So we're not, we're not trying to do something crazy. It's within the reach of the, of the street. It could, like, you know, Joe already mentioned, it's in harmony with the street. And it's going to make everything more safe. So, and the talent is going to benefit by it too. So that's kind of what I have to say. I just, I, I'm like, I'm shaken up over this because I just don't, I don't get it. I, I'm, I'm in business, you know, I understand sometimes things have to be more logical. You guys are in the zoning, you know, as EBA. I mean, this is what you guys do is look at, you know, situations like this, and if it makes sense logically, then you go ahead and do it. We understand. The first time around, you didn't like it. The second time, it seems like we've made a lot of concessions. Hopefully you'll consider it. And I appreciate, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
May I ask twice? I'll ask a third time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Right, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? For a third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak neither in favor of nor in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak neither in opposition nor, neither in favor of nor in opposition to the application? And finally, is there anyone who wishes to speak neither in opposition to nor in favor of the application? Are there any documents to be read in the record? Anybody find, well, all the documents are on file, but we guess some read the records. Is there anything else that you wish to have read in the record at this time?
No, everything was submitted that we would like to have. The summary letter, that you said that was part of the record before, or should I give you that?
The April letter. You're welcome to look up yours while we do this.
Yeah, I can, I can leave that. Just make sure that that doesn't. Should be on the.
Thank you. Yeah, it was there. I just, you just described it a different way before, and I, I didn't think. Does the, at this point, I'm going to ask the board members, if you have enough information to close the hearing, great finding about the impotent reverse rule, as well as to begin, if you have enough information to begin deliberations. George?
We're too much information, but yes.
Okay. Bert? Dennis? Please silence your phone. Thanks.
Would like to just do a quick summary before closing.
Yeah, we're, we're done. Finish your presentation.
Public hearing's closed.
What?
Public hearing's not.
No, but this is up to the board now. You finish your presentation and we're going to decide. Yes, I also have enough information.
Unless there's something else between the one, maybe that's the right.
Okay, all right, two minutes.
Thank you. One thing I would like to clarify, we're talking about the porch and the front yard setback to the porch. The one major change that was made with the application is that I said part of this earlier, that the existing house is all the way out to the edge of the porch. The new house is all the way back. The new house is conforming. So we brought that all the way back and made it conforming. So no one has been talking about that. That was eighteen, that's eighteen point eight today. And that's back to twenty-five point five feet, which is conforming. So no one has really mentioned that today. Everybody's focusing on just the steps, the low steps going up to the house. That's the sixteen feet from the street, and that's recessed into that porch. So it's very low to the ground, a couple of feet off the ground, it's an open porch. You can see right through it. There's no volume there. There's no house above it. We're only talking about a one-story covered, open front porch. You saw the overwhelming support, and there's not one person objected to this. And the last thing that I would like to state within that two minutes is reiterate the cubic feet, over eleven thousand cubic feet were taken out of the restricted setback. Huge change over the existing condition. Thank you. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we determined that we all, we have enough information, I'll remember taking a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, sorry. All the papers. Any opposed? No opposed. You're now with the deliberation and decision.
Right, so I can give a time. So what, through the chair, what our chair is asking to just go over right now is the opportunity for the board to continue on with the meeting and to hold deliberations on more and more of the the applications that are before you. You are, there's certainly public hearing closed, are eligible for decisions. You also have a statutory perspective, fifty-five days to render a decision once the public hearing has closed. So you can begin deliberations, you can continue deliberations. You can request that staff craft decision for you if we get direction on where you'd like to go. So we can support you in any, in any one of those ways. The chair is asking to ask, sort of give you these options as a function of time. Because I want to open it up to the staff.
We want to continue on.
I felt, we just speak up, so we'll. Do you have any thoughts? Yes, would you have any thoughts on?
I'm sorry, I would like to, more time.
Oh, I want more time, meaning not to start deliberating, not to start.
I'm sorry, what were you saying, George? We may have one or two of them, which I decided, oh, these may show a ghost, because it's. That's long, yeah.
And my thought is that if we there is a, not a firm, but it's, it's advised that public departments do not go super, super late. It's not, we have super, super late. And I think that we can start deliberations, but I don't think that we need to feel compelled to all deliberating and decide on all the applications for us. So that is my sense.
Sure, yeah, the only thing is that if you do choose to continue any application, the next EBA meeting is the twentieth. You would just need to merge and continue deliberations to the next date certain.
So what I'm thinking is we, we will be going in order, so we will if we start, we will start deliberating on the fifty-three Shore Road. The bird act, when we serve, and then proceeds, we have to. Is that a consensus that? You would like to do that? Okay, you guys, huh?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's go back, please, to, this is deliberation portion of the public hearing. And the board will now deliberate with the veteran mediating way three, height and tree. Fifty-three Shore Road. This is fifty-three Shore Road. The dead, sorry, the dead, the one named applicant, Zara the Blackarala owner. Application for a particular variance of section twenty-six point eleven point fourteen. Maximum brown coverage for detached garage, accessories map seventy-nine, block seventy-two, lot sixty-one, zone one fifteen. All the documents are in the record. And this one, I'd like to ask for, for an aid. George, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Let's, we have to speak up so that we know.
Well, one little thing that is. They acknowledge that they usually get hardship, specific hardship for, for variance, which in my mind is a little bit unusual and sort of unique in that they're reducing ground figures quite a bit. They put up a relatively small garage. And I think I think that would apply that, or reducing the non-conformities. In this case, it would apply to accept the variance. Among other reasons. That's my comment. To say this.
Without being repetitive, I understand, I appreciate your comments, George, that. What is an increase? It's, it's, it's a reduction of ten percent from the existing. But I, I don't believe that hardship has been shown because I don't believe that there's anything deep or peculiar to the property. And as I said before in my questions on Mr. Fettis, I don't, they rely solely on one case, and I don't believe, I believe the debt case is distinguishable. And in my view, a reduction to thirty-two percent is not is not significant enough. It's still much higher, and you allow twice as amount, the amount of fifty percent as prior under our zoning. Is allowed in Arizona. So I don't know if the staff has any input at this point.
Well, you know, certainly only the, if the board is inclined to grant a variance, there. You have the right, not the requirement, you do have the right based on a continuum of continuation of capable paths that all of them. Has got to get another student to consider the variance based on the reduction, not the purchase. That is the discretion of the board.
But also in the, if a motion is to be made, it will have to include the items that you mentioned, staff example, right? That all of the, the materials that. That the applicant said they are going to move, will be removed. Doesn't all, would all of that have to go in the motion? Because otherwise the percentage. Might not add up.
Correct. So would you be, you would be specifically granting the variance based on the presentation of the reduction. From the applicants with the finding that a CAM application would be required for work with subjects. To go to site plan requirements. And making sure that it's clear to the reason for granting the variance based on the reduction, not conformity inconsistency with. With the intent and purpose examining to, to attempt to become more compliant. These were the series of findings that might not consider. And then reference specifically the site plan of fifty three shore road. Will you, Mr. Fettis noted that the zoning table on that. Plan had the correct numbers in it if I recall correctly. So. So, but by being specific to this plan, you answer. The resolution of those, those issues.
I like the motion.
Then I will call for a motion to approve the variance for fifty three shore road. It's a motion to grant. Excuse me about. Someone, someone says that they will make a motion.
He said it's a great.
Making measure two with grants, ZBA grants twenty three dash three 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 short road and standard plumbing. Applicant reserve back row owner, application to circuit for variance, so maximum ground coverage for detached garage. Accession map seventy nine. Block seventy two, lot sixty one zone part fifteen. For detached garage, twenty three by twenty three, relatively. Small garage, all things considered, about by thirty eight square feet in a part fifteen zone. About half an acre. With hardship, does the three day zoning as we judge the non-conformities, removal of swimming pool and equipment, removal of. Box and pool area replacement, return in materials. Uh, ready to project, both of the compliance. Reduction over coverage and potential environment impact. They do acknowledge that some fact it must, usually must have a unusual architecture, but not necessary. Obviously, in my mind, it's needed for the need, snow, fire, she primates. In the CAM application, that's probably for the planning and zoning permission. And that's about it.
Do we also, we need a reference to the site plan.
Reference to site plan submitted. May fifth, two thousand twenty.
As revised, the twenty sixth of two thousand.
You have a better generic data maker, two thousand twenty three revised to twenty sixth.
Let's make sure that the conversation.
My question was to our town planner was whether. The motion is proposed, taking a trial in that the materials will be removed.
You could, you could certainly make a specific finding that, that part of the basis of the decision is the reduction in. Impermeable coverage that's been imposed on the plan as revised through twenty seven. Which I believe is in.
And seven was the. That's second of the motion. All right, let's take a walk on both of these. George Dorr.
Yes.
Dennis Serncher.
Yes.
Bertram Schmitz. Tom Schultz.
Yes.
Lori Jaffe. The variance period one to zero. Let's move on to. I will move, begins a liberation on ZBA thirty three four and CAM, one thirty one B shore road. Thomas Stevens and associate. James A. Owner own application to certificate various sections. Twenty six point eight point two A six. Out of weapon buffer, twenty six point eleven point eight setback, obviously from the rear setback. And twenty six point eleven point fourteen maximum ground coverage for replacement residence. Accessories map eighty six, block seventy two, lot one oh one, zone hour thirteen. Does the board have any further comments at this point? On this application? George?
I think the question has to be asked, is this a significant difference in the previous application or knows why are the apples? Side of that. I think there is no information they can make a ruling on.
That is. As I've indicated before. The impotent reverse rule. The board has, would have to make a finding that the variance has requested. And where the circumstances affecting the property have changed. Have haven't changed in a manner that justifies the reversal of the board's previous action. Is that indicated before? Not happened something? I don't believe, although the proposed back to the floor area. Is less than what was proposed previously. I don't believe that this is a change in the conditions since the prior decision. Or consideration that maturity affects the merits of current application. So I believe that. This, this is not significantly different and I wouldn't be evident to this rule applies here. In any events. I believe that. The requests. There's not a traditional hardship that's being playing. Again, it's a reduction in non-conformities. And I don't believe that the reduction, the non-conformities justifies the brand of variance. What's required on the side setback is ten feet. And is, the request is to go from the existing one point eight feet to five feet. Five feet. Is still half of what the setback is required out of Arizona regulations. The ground coverage. Existing is twenty six point eighteen, but being reduced to twenty two point one percent. That is, that is a reduction of several percentages, but I, I just don't believe that that's significant, especially when taken. In consideration of the size that there. Title resources buffer. Again, it's, it's a little bit. Closer to the fifty feet required, but it's, it's an increase of. One point four feet, which I don't think is significant. And I think that there are. That help concern, safety concerns, you know, certain that have been expressed by the team. So those are my, those are my comments. So. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve? Grant the allocation for variances with respect to one thirty one B shore road.
These have been tough decisions. If we do nothing, the house is going to be one point eight feet. So it's small. Maximum ground coverage is having more than twenty six point eight. That's still going to be the same. Kind of be improvements. Seventy seventeen foot wide. Small structure, partly sixteen hundred square feet. I was saying, this application is significantly different to the other. I make a motion to grant ZBA twenty three dash four, one thirty one B shore road. By one man buffer, size of that, run a rear. Maximal rock coverage for air down and replacement brightness. Existing non-conforming lot. Coverage is reduced, but more of the. Coverage is reduced, but a little bit more due to the last platform and department, not taking Florida interference. And reduce variance to title weapons. Increase the, it's just. And the condition being that EAS box be installed and. Required lamp system be installed. It's granted to apply to plans submitted. Thomas Stevens, I believe, six twenty eight, twenty three. I think that's the date.
If it's as revised through July nineteenth, twenty twenty. Revised July nineteenth and twenty twenty three.
They're motion to grant.
And I think, George, that we have, according to our staff report, the board will be required to file the variance is requested of circumstances affecting property have changed in a manner that justifies the reversal of previous action. So I. Right, but I, I think that needs to be included.
That should be included as a finding in the motion.
What's that? I, we think it's.
It's a motion to prove that we have to be a finding that it differs.
But the application is sufficiently different to justify the, the change in the.
That's my opinion. It might not be the course of my vote against, you know what I'm saying? So I feel that the branch request in answer, it's affecting the property, have changed in a manner that will justify the reversal of the previous act.
Right, the finding will cast would be in the motion of this, yeah. So, okay, that's a motion. Okay, you're second to the motion?
Sorry, I'll set it.
Second. Oh, any more discussion? Okay, is there any more stuff? Any other comments? George? George Dorr.
Yes.
Dennis Serncher.
Yes.
Bertram Schmitz. Tom Schultz.
No.
Lori Jaffe. Vote with three in favor, two opposed, no extensions. Various. Right, you have to do the can. I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion that in that. And application be denied in a consistent with cultural policies, any and all results of unacceptable and risk impacts.
George Dorr.
Yes.
Yes. Dennis Serncher.
No, the motion was for instance, deny, I can't deny it.
Dennis Serncher.
Yes.
Bertram Schmitz. Tom Schultz.
Yes.
Lori Jaffe.
Yes.
The motion to deny the cameras carried. Five to zero to zero.
So to say, to continue to the September twentieth regularly needs to be, so the consensus is that the board would just continue. Oh, to start the deliberation and continue to liberate it on twenty, ZBA twenty five. Like you have the twenty three eight, twenty three nine. To continue to liberate until the next meeting, which is September twentieth. Yes, okay, twenty twenty three.
Yes.
All opposed? So the twenty, ZBA twenty three eight, twenty three nine. Deliberation will be continued until the next meeting of ZBA September twentieth, twenty twenty three. All right. Here we go off. New business, is there any new business?
Yes, we were set up today, I think, on having notice of opportunities for training. There's mandatory training of.
Four hours.
Four hours by January first. So you can take a look at your emails and you'll see some opportunities in there for two hours. It will, for seeing a ton of this, for those of us who can't be completed in.
Yeah. It will, uh, proceed in a touch of this, for those of us who can't be completed, and she's going to get friendly person. We have a new business? Does anybody else have any new business?
I know.
Abby, any new business, uh, correspondence?
None. Uh, additions to the agenda with, uh, this, every Italian, way, 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 we're meeting, and we just noted, deliberation is on twenty three way.
Right. Um, the closing for applications is next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, there is one application, but it's under review later now to see if it's complete. That's Wednesday, I'll just.
It's not.
So see whether it's too late. It'll all, in the next meeting. And it will, you know, what it was in. They, they don't, no, no, someone has applied to the online system, right, we haven't. It, it's, but it's very recent, so we haven't done a full review of whether or not it's, we did all the required, well, you should, yeah, who said it should be well, like, about that today? Or, they, yeah, I think, here was, there was something. It said that we got. And that was a validation, yeah, I got. So you have definitely one end for the twentieth, possibly to, right? Okay, uh, any other additions, um? Can I vote for you?
No.
George?
Who said it?
All voters?
Uh.
Okay, I'll go.
Oh, would you? Nice.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey.
Hey.